Good evening, welcome to the Pullman City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, January the 25th. And yes, we are your council and we are masked and we are ready to have a council meeting. And with that, Dee, would you please call role?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Dubin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, as the snow melts on the area roadways and the impacts of the recent severe weather can now be felt in new ways, potholes. If you've noticed the development of a pothole in your neighborhood or some favorite street you have, we have ways of reporting that. We have a new system that's going to be coming this way, but right now, you can call 338-3243 or visit pullmanwa.gov and emailing the Maintenance and Operations Department section. So, again, that number is 338-3243. Rick Perringer went from police officer to property and evidence specialist with unwavering dedication, so you can join us in celebrating his retirement. It's coming up this Thursday at the Senior Center from 2:00 until 4:00. As you know, the city of Pullman maintains a list of consultants and contractors to facilitate small projects. In order to be considered for these projects, consultants and contractors must be on the city roster. You can visit Public Works News Section for additional details and find out the appropriate registration form. And the pools went back to regular schedule today. You can visit pullmanswims.com for more information. So those are the announcements tonight. With that, we now move to presentations, the downtown overlay district, and RJ Lott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight before you is a short presentation on overlay districts. Back on October 26, 2021, during the adoption of the downtown master plan, the city council had a brief discussion regarding a possible overlay district for the downtown area, and this presentation tonight's a follow-up on that discussion. So you may ask, what is an overlay district? Pullman City Code, Section 12.05.02088 defines an overlay zone as a set of zoning requirements described in Title 17 and imposed in addition to those to the underlying zone district. What this means is, is that the zone district is superimposed, the overlay, is superimposed over another district or districts, so it can cover more than one zoning district, and it stipulates additional restrictions to the regulations already in place. So the additional restrictions don't necessarily mean more severe, they can mean less restrictive. For instance, if a standard setback in a zoning district were 10 feet for a rear yard, this may reduce the rear yard setback to 5 feet, or it may increase it to 20. So not only does this make it more restrictive, it can also make it less restrictive. Simple examples in Pullman, manufactured home park overlay, the airport overlay, planned residential developments, and limited zones. We'll get to those here in a moment. So what it does, the planned residential development overlay district, you'll see one of these later in your agenda tonight. A PRD is the most common overlay district within Pullman. It requires the property in that overlay to be developed as only a planned residential development. A planned and developed as a single unit, which generally includes clustered buildings, common open spaces, and a mix of building types, like I said. We'll see one of those here later this evening. The manufactured home park, this is a little bit different than your traditional subdivision. It goes through a different process, through staff and then through the Planning Commission. This really is the second most popular. It restricts the use of the land to be developed as only a manufactured home park. Examples around Pullman include University Park, Terrace Estates, Park West, and 70s, excuse me if I'm pronouncing that wrong, Trailer Court. So the limited overlay, where we stand right now, Southeast Crestview and South Grand, is the C3L zone, which means that it limits the use at this location to government facilities and associated uses, such as City Hall and the neighboring recreation center. Across Grand, where we have the Living Faith Center, is the C3L zone. It limits its uses to churches and associated uses. So there's two very similar overlays that are right near where we are this evening. Perhaps the most intuitive overlay is an airport overlay. Pullman actually has two. Generally speaking, overlay districts as it relates to airports restrict the height of buildings, the noise, and some lighting, so it doesn't conflict with aircraft movements, so it increases safety in and around airports. Like I said, this is probably the most intuitive and easy to imagine. So you may ask, how are overlay districts used? So it restricts some aspect of the underlying district. I talked a little bit about setbacks. This can restrict uses such as duplexes, manufactured homes only for residential uses. It could also restrict building heights in a downtown area. It could restrict signs. For instance, if a city had, oh, excuse me. If a city had an interstate nearby, it may have an overlay that would allow for signs to be at 50 feet or higher, so that interstate traffic could see them at a distance. Whereas signs in a, in a area that is historic but also commercial, they want to limit sign height to tombstone style, where it may be only at four or five feet high. Most often, overlay districts are really just part of a larger zoning district. It restricts uses on a portion of a zoning district to make it more compatible with the surrounding area. So for instance, along that interstate freeway or in a historic commercial area. It also may be used to incentivize, so this could encourage economic development in areas that are underperforming or are just generally struggling. It also may enhance a special use district, like I mentioned, a historic district. So when we talk about an overlay district versus a code change, an overlay really should be used as a code change would adversely impact other zones in the same designation, or only a portion of a zoning district requires additional regulation. A code change should be used when an entire zone designation needs updated or is amending regulations. The proposed change would not have an impactful consequences for other districts within the same zoning designation. Now, when we talk about downtown, this is the C2 district in downtown Pullman. This is the only location within Pullman where there is the C2 commercial zone. So when we talk about changes for one zoning district, it would be for all of this area highlighted on this map. So if we want to have an overlay, it could be a part of this C2 zone, or it could reach outside of the boundaries as well. So it could even spill into another commercial zone, or it could spill into possibly a residential zone. So there are a lot of options on how to create an overlay district and what you want it to ultimately accomplish. So really, as I finish, there are three questions really facing the city council. The first, does the city council desire an overlay district? And if so, what area would that overlay district cover? And third, what additional restrictions, either more impactful or less impactful, would be included in that overlay district? So those are some options. Staff's willing to take direction on what the council would like to see, perhaps further development overlay, or perhaps changes to the downtown zone itself? I'm open for questions.
Questions or comments for RJ? Nathan, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. RJ, now, there's going to be a couple, I'll just have two really. One, with the mixed use downtown housing and apartments above business districts, that doesn't require overlay, correct?
No, current zoning allows residential uses above or below first floor.
Then, the other question I would have isn't necessarily related to just downtown, but as you know, there's been rising housing costs.
Yes.
It seems to never end. Are there ways to use overlay to help calm down that, those pricing, or those costs? Or is that something that's not allowed?
Sure, sure. So a good example that other cities have really looked into is the use of accessory dwelling units. So for instance, current city code allows accessory dwelling units only to be utilized by family members. So if we were to create an overlay district where we could allow accessory dwelling units to be occupied by individuals other than immediate family members, that could potentially open up new housing options, especially at a lower income level. So that might be an option. Another option could be increased height limitations, or perhaps reduction in parking if it's near transit zones, so that those that don't have vehicles but could utilize the bus system to get to work or possibly school. So there are some options that we could use. This is not a commercial-only overlay. It could really span really any number of options.
Okay, I know myself, and I'm sure many citizens would appreciate us looking into those overlay zones that could keep the costs at least a little lower, and I would appreciate you coming back at some time in the future. I know you have your hands full right now, but with some examples that we can look at. With the downtown, do you have certain overlay examples that you might follow?
Yeah, there are many examples throughout even the state of Washington that we could pull from. I didn't bring any specifics because I wasn't quite sure which direction the council might want to go. But if there are certain things, such as design standards or limitations on certain uses, we can certainly develop those, that's not a problem.
Okay, I'd love to hear your ideas after the rest of the council speaks.
Any other comments? Eileen?
Yeah, this has been something that's been on the, kind of on the back burner for a while, and I'm really pleased to see it coming before the council tonight. So in terms of our process, do we, we will direct you to develop the overlay zone and then it comes back to council for approval, or do we just say, go for it tonight?
So if we do want to move forward and eventually adopt, it would take some time for staff to do the research, make sure that it's really what council is intending for the overlay district to accomplish. It would go through the process with a, with the Planning Commission and a public hearing, and then ultimately to the city council for adoption. So there is going to be some length of time in there to develop and then finally get it back to you folks.
Excellent, so we'll get a sort of a menu of options, or that'll be in the works?
Yes, I can definitely come back with some suggestions, or if there are some suggestions this evening, I'd more likely take those, but I can come back and make sure that we're moving in the same direction that perhaps council is intending this to go.
Yeah, because I think economic development is our goal here.
Right, especially as it relates to downtown.
Yeah, specifically for the downtown, and I like Nathan's idea about looking at the housing situation too. But one of the things that came out in the BDS study was about building height, about new buildings, I think he said, all we had to do was adjust it by like 5 feet, because then we could use a podium style with steel framing for the first floor, and then that would bump us up to, leave some other options for developers to go, but right now their hands are kind of tied to that one particular building style because of that height restriction. So that'd be one I'd like to at least take a look at and see how we can work, maybe not go higher, maybe go, but anyway, so we can use that style of building and encourage development in that way for what we want for downtown, so.
When you speak of downtown, are you referring to just the seat, the C2 zoning district? Or are you talking a little bit outside of that area?
Let's just keep it at the C2 for now.
Okay, so if we're going to make changes to just C2, it wouldn't require the creation of an overlay? We could just incorporate that into the existing zone?
Okay, well, hmm, we'll ponder that as well.
So there's a lot of options here and a lot of different directions we could go.
And I think, somebody, correct my memory, isn't the overlay zone essential for moving forward with the Main Street program? I thought that was kind of one of their stipulations.
I don't know that for sure. I'd have to do some research on that.
Yeah, I thought it was. So yeah, let's get her going.
Megan Guido.
So what I hear you saying is, there's a lot of flexibility with, it's providing more flexibility.
Yes.
So I'm all for that, and with the idea that we could look at things like housing and how that would be impacted with an overlay, but I'd also be interested in looking at outside of this particular central business district. You said we could even go further. I would be interested in seeing what some of those options look like.
Okay.
Frances Benjamin.
Thank you. So I have a few questions, just to help me understand. When you were referencing, and back to the accessory dwelling units, where it's only restricted to family members, with the changes related to state law no longer in allowing us to limit to certain people that are related, is that also impacted by that, to where no longer could we restrict accessory dwelling units to just family members?
I'd have to defer that to Laura.
I don't believe so, council member, as I don't have the language of the new law in front of me, but as I recall, it was specific to in a structure.
In a structure, okay. So I was just, I'm just thinking on the side ones. I am very much interested in examples of what other cities have done as it relates to overlays with the downtown. My feeling related to whether it should be the same as the current C2 is, I know we've had, there's the downtown organization, and there's also, when we've looked at the BDS report, there's buildings and locations identified in both of those that are outside that C2. For example, the Pufferbelly Depot would be one that is not in the current C2 zoning, but if we're doing a overlay of the downtown, I would, I would think that was the case. It'd be nice just to prevent confusion among our, the community members, if we had a consistency when we're talking the downtown, the overlay, it's consistent when we're looking at the BDS report or things like that, so related, related to it. One thing I would be interested, and I could see valuable as it relates to an overlay in this space, is I know there's, as it relates to the city's open carry laws, where the state restricts to consumption, whereas for the city, it's carry, as it relates, as it relates to alcohol. And so the city is more restricted than the state is as it relates to the city, as the state's law. Because of that, I know some businesses downtown were concerned if they were trying to put in something out in the parking lot area for their business, if alcohol was related, if that alcohol glass was carried across the sidewalk, it'd be potentially in violation of current city code. And so I could see with the overlay to look at if we're going to, as a part of the downtown, have areas that might be in that way, maybe to go with the state alcohol carry code as opposed to the city one in the downtown overlay area. So I'm just interested as it relates to codes and if that's, if that's something that could help businesses. Then my last one had to do with the incentive piece, because in here you talk about the incentives to encourage economic development, and I could see some of those could look at taxing or changes in tax structure. Is that something that is a gifting of resource if we do it just for an overlay as opposed to everyone in the city that's within that industry? I'm thinking, when we're looking at entertainment taxes, one where we had to do it for everybody as opposed to just one, is, are we restricted in the overlays as it relates to that?
Yeah, I'd have to admit that I'm not really up to speed on taxing and assessing.
And I wouldn't expect that you would know that one. These are, and what I'm, I'm not asking for an answer tonight.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm hoping that as you're researching this, to be able to bring that back and help us better understand what we can and can't do, and part of it is what other cities have done as examples.
Sure.
So I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I'm just trying to give you what are the things on my mind right now as I think about this.
Okay, Becky Dubin.
Thanks. RJ, you were talking about design standards, and so we could either change the district or create an overlay to, for example, and this is a question, I know it sounds like a statement, but like, change the distance between a building and the sidewalk and that kind of thing? Those are, those are things we would be considering?
That's definitely an option. You wouldn't want to encroach onto public right-of-way.
Right.
But there are some design standards that you could incorporate to make that space perhaps more usable. For instance, if you wanted to talk about the downtown core, if you required a certain percentage of transparency along building fronts, which makes a downtown more walkable, that's also an option, which we don't currently have. For instance, if a city had a 60% requirement that glass was installed along any frontage, where passersby could look into a restaurant or a retail store, it makes the area a bit more inviting, and you don't have that opportunity for blank walls, and it makes a more walkable situation.
Yeah, any recommendations or examples of that would be great, too.
I mean, there are so many options here that we could go any number of directions. Is there, maybe I should open it up a little bit, are there any areas that we should not explore?
Mike?
Can I jump in? It sounds kind of, if it pleases the council, and based on what RJ is presenting, some of the ideas being developed here, would it please the council if staff were to go back and do some additional research on some of what other cities are doing, and bring this back for some further discussion, instead of just turning staff loose to bring a bunch of recommendations? Because I'm also hearing there's some talk about the downtown, and then as well as other areas of town too, so it's really quite broad right now, and to best utilize staff's time, can we entertain that as an idea?
Okay, Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I like what you're saying. I would agree to that. It does seem like there's several different areas going on. I would say one thing, the little bit of research that I've done in addition with the overlays, is the possibility for enhancing our downtown waterways utilizing that zoning. And so that, I think, would be a good specific one to focus on, while of course, all these other. But I know this has been something that the council, as well as some of the candidates, I know council member Benjamin has focused on this in the past, is enhancing that waterway. So I think that would be a great use for zoning, but again, there are so many different options. I wish you could use the overlay to kind of mitigate some of the vacant buildings, but from what I understand, that's more along the lines of codes than overlays. But yes, good suggestion, Mike.
Go to Pat, and then we'll go to Ann.
So I'm not ashamed to say that I am really, don't know enough to even be able to start asking questions about this. So any, any kind of information you give us, if it's dumbed down somewhat for me, that would be awesome.
Okay.
But in part of that, I think I would specifically like to see, what are the benefits of an overlay district? And maybe that could incorporate kind of what I'm saying, what's, you know, what we understand, what we don't understand. So I would like to see some of that, just to educate me a little bit further.
Sure, I think that if I brought back an example from an eastern Washington city that we could all, maybe Walla Walla or something like that, that's got some historic downtown properties, historic downtown feel, maybe that would make it a little bit easier to grasp, so I can certainly do that.
Great, thank you, RJ.
Okay, Ann Parks?
Yeah, thank you. I agree. I, we don't know what we don't know, I think, in this situation, and so, because it is so broad, and understanding the benefits and, like you said, which direction or what can we focus on, it would be helpful to have a little more background information, so I like Mike's, Mike Urban's suggestion of maybe narrowing it down a little bit for us.
Yeah, this is a very broad topic, so there's a lot to take in, for sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Eileen?
Yeah, so for purposes of, of staff time, shall we sort of agree, could we agree maybe to focus on the downtown for right this, right now? Because, yeah, I mean, there are some other great ideas come out here, but if we want to focus on the downtown, because I think that's high on our list of goals, if not the number one of our list of goals, and so as we want to put these tools in our toolbox for the immediate future.
Back to Megan Guido.
And that's fine. I, I would like to see us talk about it down the road, and I realize downtown is the priority, so realizing, giving you some focus, we can concentrate just on this for now, but, you know, just because we have larger issues beyond downtown, I would, I would like to see you come back with some, some thoughts about additional overlays in different areas.
Absolutely.
Ann, did you have your hand up again?
No.
Okay, Nathan?
Directing traffic.
So I agree with what Eileen is saying, should be focusing on downtown, but as I had mentioned at the very beginning, downtown is one thing, the housing is the entire city. And so while we're looking at downtown, that is great, but when looking at overlays, there's obviously going to be some, some overlay into outlying areas, even near to downtown. And so I think it would be a natural outspout for us to also discuss other areas as well. But there's a lot on your plate, and so I'll leave it up to your expertise.
Any other comments on this? RJ, I think you've got a direction. It may be wide, but you've got a direction, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We now move to item D in the agenda. This is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. The council's had a chance to look these items over ahead of time. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with that, Laura McAlune, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 11, 2022, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105441 through 105491, totaling $118,793.35. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105492 through 105514, totaling $1,199,466.47. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105515 through 105534. Electronic transfers 45, 46, 808, and 813 through 818. Payroll direct deposits numbered 73864 through 74166, totaling $1,396,270.52. Payroll direct deposits numbered 73864 through 74166, totaling $1,396,270.52. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105535 through 105613, totaling $491,497.70. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable electronic funds transfer numbered 12252021, totaling $56,955.41. Resolution number R-322. A resolution accepting a water line easement granted by Community Action Center, authorizing the execution of said easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Resolution number R-422. A resolution accepting a sanitary sewer line easement granted by Community Action Center, authorizing the execution of said easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto. And resolution number R-522. A resolution accepting an assignment of easement granted by Community Action Center, authorizing the execution of said assignment of easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through nine. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now move to the regular agenda tonight, and the first item is an ordinance dealing with the compression issue. We go to Mike Urban, our city manager, administrator, supervisor, we can have all kinds of titles for you, formerly finance.
Thank you, those are some of the nicer titles that I've been called today. Good evening, council. Before you tonight is ordinance 22-3, mending the budget to address a compression issue in the police department specifically. So during the recruitment for a new police chief last summer, staff became aware of salary compression issues between the bargaining units and the non-represented managers of the police department, specifically the commander and the police chief. So Human Resources got a jumpstart on this, and they began researching salary issues at the end of the third quarter in anticipation of the police guild ratifying their contract at the end of 2021, which they did, and the new contract has commenced as of January 1st, 2022. So staff pulled some research and provided some data points, including where we are now, and some suggestions of where we could exist to remain competitive in our market, and we've provided that for you as part of this agenda item. So staff is really before you tonight with this ordinance to address the compression issues, and the timing of this also goes along that Chief of Police Gary Jenkins has notified Mayor Johnson that he will be retiring on August 1st of this year. So going out and performing a recruitment is imminent, and Commander Jake Opkenorth has been through the chief recruitment process, and discussions with the mayor and the police chief says that he can be promoted to the chief of police position and perform at the high standards that our department requires. There's several steps that need to go on to do that, and really, this agenda item is outside of those steps, but I'd certainly be happy to address those in and above the memo that Gary Jenkins sent to everybody on Friday. So really, due to this change in the police department, we should begin the recruitment for a new commander immediately. Part of that timing is due to the fact that the current commander is going to be heading off to the FBI Academy for some additional training, and having him involved in this recruitment is extremely important. So staff is recommending to the city council to adopt ordinance 22-3 as presented, amending the police department budget for 2022 to address the compression issues with the command staff, and then set the salary range for the open, the soon-to-be-open position, so we can go out and recruit at that range, and hopefully get a nice, deep candidate pool. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Not seeing any. And do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
So moved to adopt ordinance 22-3? Second.
Moved and seconded. Laura, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 22-3, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20-11, adopted December 1, 2020, and entitled an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the City of Pullman for the biennium 2021 through 2022, relating to the 2022 to 2024 Police Officers Guild Uniformed Employees Collective Bargaining Agreement and subsequent compression to salaries as it relates to the police department commander and the chief of police.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
Item number two is an ordinance approving a final plan of Hidden View Planned Residential Development. With that, RJ Lott.
Thank you once again, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before you this evening is the final plan of Hidden View PRD Plan Residential Development. The map on your screen is the location, so to orient you just a little bit, this location is on the west end of Terra View Drive. The high school is on the right side of the map, and Camiak Elementary would be on the left, so in between Camiak and Pullman High School. This PRD was before the city council back on June 8th, 2021, for preliminary approval. It contains 15 lots over approximately 3.2 acres. Staff has examined the proposed final PRD plan and has found that it conforms to the applicable portion of the preliminary PRD plan and all pertinent conditions placed on the preliminary PRD plan by the city council. The construction and maintenance of outstanding improvements, such as streets, utilities, and landscaping, have been assured through a deposit for this PRD. In the past, we've talked a little bit about sidewalks. In this instance, sidewalks would be required before any occupancy of any of the structures. I've got on here on the screen this map. It's, I apologize for the quality, but this is the general layout of the PRD, so you can see the common areas, the structures, the parking, and the private drive, which would all be maintained under the homeowners association. So at this time, staff recommends the approval of the final plan of Hidden View Planned Residential Development, and the ordinance changing the zoning for this development to R2/PRD. Are there any questions?
Eileen?
This looks very good, and the map's not that bad. Your maps are getting better and better. I really appreciate that. Just out of curiosity, and housing has been on everybody's mind, do you have any idea what the, what the price range for the, for these units is going to be? Just a seat-of-the-pants guess?
The developer came in with a number. I don't recall it off the top of my head, and unfortunately, with the cost of, of raw materials and availability of lumber, that number has crept, crept up a little bit. But the whole purpose of this PRD, and the neighboring one that we did probably about a year and a half ago, Camiak Cottage, is to provide smaller housing units and a lower entry level for purchase price.
Okay.
Any other comments? If not, then do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Laura?
Ordinance number 22-4, an ordinance approving the final plan of Hidden View Planned Residential Development, located southeast of northwest Terra View Drive and northwest Overlook Drive on Military Hill.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number three is a resolution approving the final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision. Clayton Forsman, our deputy public works director is here. Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and good evening, city council. This final plat is for the Hidden View PRD that RJ just presented. It obtained preliminary plat approval by city council on June 8th, 2021. So the next step for that PRD, and the final step here, is to create the actual lots that are in the PRD. So this final plat would do that. The developer has chosen to name the final plat Paradise Hills 13, and the final plat has been reviewed by staff and found to meet all applicable preliminary plat conditions for the PRD. A copy of that final plat has been included in your council packet for your reference. As RJ alluded to, securities have been collected for the site improvements, therefore allowing acceptance of the final plat. It is staff's recommendation that the final plat of Paradise Hills 13 be accepted by council, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Moved to a dash, adopt R-622.
Second.
Laura?
Resolution number R-622, a resolution approving the final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision number 13, and authorizing the mayor, finance, and administrative services director, and director of public works to sign the final plat and to accept all dedications made thereon for the use of the public.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four is a motion to approve a contract amendment of the Pullman Chamber of Commerce for tourism promotion through December 31st, 22. Once again, city administrator, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor mentioned before you, is this motion to approve the amendment to the contract with the Chamber of Commerce for the calendar year of 2022. The amount of $180,000 was budgeted and approved by the city council as part of the biennial budget process at the end of 2019. Sorry? Yes, or 2020. So as part of the December 14th city council discussion, staff was instructed to bring back a document for approval that would extend the two previous six months contracts that we had with the Chamber of Commerce to a one-year contract, and that would take us to the end of this budget cycle. In addition, the city council requested that the future contracts be enacted on the same timeline as those budget cycles, so this is the last piece before we go out and put together another biennial budget for 2023 and 2024, where we include the scope of work. So based on the items that we were provided on that, staff is recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to enter in the attached agreement as presented, and have the Pullman Chamber of Commerce perform the tourism part of their contract for the rest of the 2022 calendar year.
And again, I want to thank council members McCall and Records, and our city attorney, administrator for working through this. Any further comments on this, or any questions on it? If not, then do I hear a motion on this?
Would you approve the contract amendment?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
No, Mike, sorry.
It's a motion to approve a contract with the Pullman Chamber of Commerce for tourism promotion through December 31st, 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
Item number five is a motion to approve a revised marketing blueprint for the City of Pullman. Here's Jennifer Hackman, our economic development person.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This item is a continuation, it's a follow-up for most of you. It is relatively new to some of you, so I'll do a little bit of background and take us to where we are right now. This has been one of council's overriding goals, to enact and leverage an economic development marketing plan for a little while. Started out last spring with an RFP to hire a consultant to do a study and develop a plan, and that consultant was hired and developed that plan over the summer, and then delivered that plan in September to council, the presentation. And we came back in October to have discussion about the plan and see how council wanted to proceed. We got some feedback during that discussion. Most of that applied to the timeline, and there were also some questions about, you know, adding more measurement and asking about our benchmarks, and so the city administrator and I worked to address and bring some of that feedback into the revised plan that you see in the packet. And so that really just aligns and shifts. I think there was, we just wanted to make sure, the council wanted to make sure that we didn't move too aggressively, even as there was a lot of interest in moving forward as soon as possible. So we've made those adjustments. And so before you tonight is that revised plan, where we've prioritized as well branding and targeting, and just aligned that with council's wishes. So I am excited about the prospect of getting started with this plan. I know that from the businesses that I talk with, even though we are hoping to get to an endemic level with COVID, there's a lot of ground, ground to recover, and in service of council's recovery, retention, and recruitment response to COVID, this would be a major way to address that. But I think along with that, and we know that the workforce is going to remain tight for the next year or so, making marketing even more important, I want to say, though, along with that, there's a lot of civic pride, there's a lot of desire to share what we have in Pullman, there's a desire to grow, not just to help the businesses themselves, but also to address the cyclical nature of our economy and help to diversify our economy. If council approves the marketing plan tonight, our next step would be to procure a firm to perform the services with staff oversight, and we would include the communications coordinator, who has been hired and is going to be joining us pretty soon with that. And I imagine, once we get started, that we would seek to have input from a small stakeholder group that would meet, but then we would bring measurement back to council regularly, minimum of monthly on that. So with that, I look forward to receiving your feedback and your direction. Thank you.
Okay, comments? Nathan, your hand's up first, and we'll go to Megan.
Thank you. You know, this is nothing about the blueprint itself, it looks great. I just want to say thank you. You have been absolutely such a important part of Pullman since you've arrived. You've taken so much under your wing and performed admirably. So I just wanted to recognize all the efforts you're doing, working with all of the businesses. I hear all good things, and just keep up the good work. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
That's very kind of you, council member.
Megan Guido?
So I just had two comments, Jen. So I think the report and the, the plan looks good and is, is solid. I read it pretty closely, have a lot of interest in it. And one thing I noticed that they said was, and this has been a theme tonight, it seems like a couple of people have mentioned the importance of housing. Again, that kind of came up, they recognized Golden Shovel did, about how that really goes part and parcel with economic development and bringing in new businesses. We need to make sure that there's affordable housing that goes hand-in-hand with those folks that are then hopefully going to stay here in Pullman to live and not commute. The other thing, as a new council member, that has just been kind of in the back of my mind, as all these good things are happening with Pullman, along with the work that you're doing, Janet, around economic development for the city, there's a lot of other entities out there who are working in terms of progress for Pullman, and whether it's Pullman 2040 or whether it's the Downtown Pullman Association, and we have a candidate in town for the Downtown Pullman Association this very week. I just want to, I guess, reinforce the need for coordination, as all these groups are working together and developing a brand for Pullman, and again, would have the same good intentions of working to make Pullman a better place and bring economic development, that we just make sure we have all the paddles and the water going the same way. I think there's a real opportunity to work together, and I would like to see that happen. So communication, communication, communication.
Yeah, actually, this plan also calls for that exact thing, engaging with other stakeholders. We already have, we have some ways that we do that, you know, we have City Update is a good opportunity, and I agree.
Frances Benjamin?
Thank you. I appreciate your responsiveness in, in flexibility and looking at the plan and making these adjustments. I think this is wise for setting us up for success, so I, I appreciate the, the adjustments that you're making and why you're making them, so thank you.
You bet.
Any other comments? Now do I hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A motion to approve the revised marketing blueprint. Moving second, a motion to approve the revised marketing blueprint for the city of Pullman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now go to a discussion item.
Thank you, council.
Council board commissions committee assignments. And Dee Stiles, I have your name up, but Mike Urban's there too, so. So Dee?
So what you have before me, council member, is a memo of the last six years of council commissioning and board commission assignments.
I was just practicing, let me do this over again. Good evening, council and mayor. So what you have before you is a memo outlining the last six years of assignments to boards and commissions for the council and on how you would like to proceed for the next year.
Mike Urban.
Sure. And council, as you're looking down the list of the different boards and commissions and who has sat on them recently, there wasn't a mission, so we want to make sure that we do talk about council's appointment to the Downtown Pullman Association Board. Council member Records held that position until he left to the West Side, and in the meantime, it's been kind of handled ad hoc between a couple different council members, but we would also like to make sure we appoint that position as well full-time.
And that's one, that's one position on the downtown?
It is.
Okay. Since that isn't on your list, why don't we try and address that one first? Anyone who would like to nominate themselves, or you suggest somebody? Eileen?
On, among the current council members, I think I've probably been to as many of their meetings as anybody. And, I mean, right from the very beginning, when we were first just in the talking stages, maybe getting this together and learning about the mainstream organization and what it's, what it's going to be able to do for us when we, when we get it together. And as Megan just said, communications among all these entities is going to be key. And I've really enjoyed, you know, watching it grow and being a part of it, and I would like to nominate myself for this position.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to, at least for the downtown association? Anne?
I would be interested in it as well. I've been involved recently, but I've, I'm very, I've become very familiar with it and I'm, I would just like to contribute to that as well.
Okay. Anyone else of the council who would like, this, we're just strictly talking about the downtown group on that?
I'd also have an interest, but obviously lots of folks are interested.
It's very popular right now.
I would defer to Megan then, myself.
I didn't quite hear what you said, Anne?
I would defer to Megan, I will withdraw my.
Okay, you'll withdraw, and it gets down to between two of our council members. Do we have any more? I guess the best way, I'm not looking at our legal advice, right now is to take a vote on the two. If, if that is okay with you.
So I hate to put you on the spot, but the committee appointments are nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the council.
I'd at least like to get the council backing before I appoint.
So perhaps a discussion prior to the appointment?
Okay.
Rather than a motion?
Okay. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
How long is the term of this position?
Mike?
This would be renewed next year, same time.
Annually, okay.
Okay, so it's a one-year term?
I think based on, can I, I'm sorry.
Please do.
It was rude.
You have the floor, you still have the floor.
Based on the longevity of service to the Downtown Pullman Association, even before it was such, I would suggest that Eileen would be our best representative at this time. And again, knowing that it's a one-year appointment, we have some flexibility there in terms of different levels of appointments, so she would have my support on that.
Okay. Any other comments from council?
The, the one thing I would echo with Pat is that because the downtown is our number one thing, I think this is an appointment that should rotate each year just so that all the council members have an opportu, as many as possible have an opportunity to be involved with it.
Okay. And that we can definitely assure. Okay. Any other comments on, we've heard one that said they would appreciate Eileen. Nathan?
So now, correct me if I'm wrong, are the, are the downtown, when I was going to those, quite a few, I think Eileen was going at the same time Brandon was as well, they were somewhat open. Are they somewhat open, or is it totally closed to anyone? Like for instance, if Megan would be interested in kind of just sitting in and seeing what it's like, or something along those lines?
But there's only one voting member.
Yeah, one voting member, one voting member, but to kind of.
Right.
Yeah, the way I understand, these are open meetings to, anybody can come see how their board is performing.
Because, because I've attended some of the downtown meetings before, and it was just like an open meeting where I just sat down in the place.
Yeah.
I don't know if I went to their board meetings because I thought that was just strictly closed, but.
Yeah, and the board did take a huge shift last year as far as growing in size and becoming purpose, especially for hiring a full-time coordinator.
Yeah. The only reason I bring that up is anyone who would be interested may want to go and see if they haven't been to a meeting before.
So anyone else would make any comment on this position? We heard one, yes, Anne?
Yes, I was supportive of Megan because I think that sometimes a fresh view and a fresh voice can be, can be good, and so that's why I was thinking one of our newer council members, it may be a good opportunity for them to get involved and, and offer, you know, and then report back to us as, as would be part of it.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Any other comments from council members?
Comment? Could it be set up as a voting member and an alternate who could act in place of that voting member, should that person not be able to attend or?
So the way I understand, and I'm talking out of church a little bit without the document in front of me, is there is one position on the downtown association for the city council, for a member, to represent Pullman. And the way I am interpreting the question is if Eileen is appointed and Megan is the backup, if there's a meeting that Eileen can't make, can Megan attend in her place? I think if that is the appointment, without looking at the document and verifying, I believe that we are within the spirit and the letter of the law.
Okay. Which is sort of like we've done the mayor pro tem, they've had somebody there that was a position in waiting, so to speak, and then they moved up from there, so.
So the only thing I would add is that it is a, it's a separate, private, nonprofit entity that has provided a position for the city. It would be their decision as to whether an alternate can vote in the place of the regular appointee, but that's certainly something we can explore.
We can certainly address on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think with our contribution to their position, I think that's something that they could probably take on with some generosity. I would certainly advocate for that pretty strongly on our behalf of the city of Pullman.
Okay. Very good. I like your compromise, so. In this way, both can see it. So Eileen, you'll be the pointed on that one, and then Megan, you'll be the alternate. And then next year. Okay? All right. Other board positions, yes?
Now would be the point, when you would need the council to confirm that appointment. So you would need the motion at this point.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on that appointment?
So moved. Or move to appoint Eileen McCall as voting member to the Downtown Pullman Association with Megan Guido as an alternate who would act in her place should the need arise.
Okay. If I had a motion, do I hear a second?
I have a question.
Yes.
Since this is under discussion, is it okay for us to vote? Okay.
Yes, it's a regular meeting.
Thank you.
When the attorney tells me I can need a vote, I'm going to go for it, yeah. Pardon?
Second.
Okay, we have a second on that.
I know you said we could.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I knew that would be the one that would have the most discussion. Now you see the list, and this is where the council takes a look at the list and sort of divides things among themselves and talks about what you would like to do, and I turn it over to you, so we, Frances, we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mayor. As I'm looking at the, the other assignments that were filled by previous council member Chapin, Records and Sorenson, a number of them I have already previously filled and experienced, and so I'd, I'd be interested in doing ones that I hadn't previously been on, just in, as a part of discussion. The, the three of those that are left is the Audit Committee, the CIP, and also the LTAC. And I'm, I'm happy to do, you know, Audit and CIP if that's, as, as, as we're in the midst of this discussion.
Other comments? Becky?
Yes, I'm also interested in the Audit Committee serving on that. On the LTAC too, I'd be interested in.
You can always tell when the pager goes off. Yes, Anne?
I would really like to stay on the library board. I'm enjoying that appointment a lot, and there's a lot going on there that I'd like to continue to be a part of.
Okay.
Also, the, the, I'm fine with the volunteer firefighter and reserve officers, even though I completely blanked the last meeting, but I made every other one.
We got it done, I just want you to know that, so.
Just totally.
Okay, Nathan?
I would be interested, I, well, this is of course between Eileen and I, with the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, a lot of my education has surfaced, is surrounded with that, and I think it would be interesting, but I of course defer to Eileen.
I'm heavily invested in, in PBAC. It's, we've got the culmination of a big project coming up in the next four or five months, and I really want to see that through, if you wouldn't mind. The meetings are open, and Tara from staff here always goes, and I always go, so if you would like to come on board, and then once we get this other project launched, you and I can thumb wrestle over it, and we'll see if we can make some adjustments, but I really want to see that project through. But to get familiar with the project, I really encourage you to start coming to meetings and get familiar with it, because it is the culmination of about a four-year project.
I can understand your feelings on that. I also understand with the downtown association, you're on four committees now, and the background that I have in that, along with my work on sustainable energy, water, not only from masters at University of Idaho and work at NASA, I think greatly would assist with Palouse Basin Aquifer. But, you know, that is, that is your discretion.
Like I say, I would love to have you come on board and, and learn about this project that we've been working on. But I'd be more than happy to give up CIP.
Oh, you mean you're going to hold on to your solid waist, because you've been holding on that for a long time? I just thought I'd just say that, yes.
Again, that's kind of one of those that, that went on hold because of COVID. CIP hasn't done hardly anything in the last two years, we're only meeting quarterly, and sometimes not even that. So it, although it looks like I'm on a lot of committees, there's really not that much time commitment on that. But we're hoping to get that re-energized here if our COVID situation ever finds, finds equilibrium. That's a, that's something we're hoping for.
So CIP is open, you said?
Yeah, CIP, I'm open to reconsider that, yeah.
Okay. Well, Nathan pointed out you had four, so, okay, yeah.
What's that? Yeah. Well, I know Frances is interested in the CIP, I'm also on the other CIP, and I just took that on last year.
We have, we have two council on CIP.
Yeah, yeah, myself and Eileen. So, okay, if you would be agreeable to look at that again, possibly next year?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, then I will work with you and we can.
Yeah.
And, and she'll send you the meeting times to make sure you know about it so you can show up.
We'll get you on the list, yeah.
I'll be respective of that, respectable about that. The Palouse Knowledge Corridor, I had a question about. Now, currently, I'm not sure how this works out because Frances is serving, council member Benjamin is serving as, is it WSU representative right now, or the NOCO, Palouse Knowledge Corridor?
That's not as a part of my city council position.
Yeah. So I wasn't sure if there's any, you know, challenges with.
No, no.
Okay.
No.
All right.
I welcome you on.
Yeah, well, I've, I've been on there for a while, and I know I'd like to, and I've said this a number of different years in a row, I'd like newer members to be able to experience some of the committees that some of us have, have nestled into for, well, some, a decade or more, so that we can all experience that and we don't lose that institutional knowledge, so that we can all experience it. So I'm pointing that out there. I am more than willing to continue serving on Palouse Knowledge Corridor, although I think the name has changed to NOCO. Frances, I'm looking at you, sorry.
The, it's still Palouse Knowledge Corridor, but the acronym rather than PKC is now NOCO.
Okay. I think moving forward also, if we could start to have explanations, kind of brief descriptions of each of these committees so that people can understand them a little better.
We, we have a sheet for that, it tells you actually when they meet.
When they meet, but not necessarily exactly what they are.
Okay.
So I think that would help also. And I know, Mayor, I'd, I'd actually at some time like to hear about the Joint Planning Area Committee. I know that is reserved, as far as I understand, for mayors, but it sounds really interesting.
Okay. And you're also welcome to attend that too as well. That's just a meeting with the county, and it's actually in the, in the ordinance, I think, when we adopted the tax, actually who are the members is specific on that.
Yeah, that was back in 2004 or something along those lines.
Well, not, not really, it took a while before we finally adopted that, took 10 years to finally get that joint tax.
That's the upper, that's the mayor and the commissioners and so on.
Yeah. One commissioner.
Okay.
One mayor. Two public works directors, planning, city administrator, county administrator. Finance from both areas, that's specific in the, in the group, so. Okay. Heard from Becky, is there, you mentioned audit. Megan, is there anything that you would like to add on this?
So just to voice my interest in down the road, PBAC, I'm also interested in that one. And so tell me what, is there a finance committee, or is that the Audit Committee?
That's the Audit.
That's the Audit Committee, okay.
May I say, I will say that the Audit Committee is great when you're newer, because you see from the inside the, the financial functioning of the city. And my, my greatest joy of that was being able to tell people that the city of Pullman is the city of Pullman's biggest consumer. We buy everything from nuts and bolts at Pullman Building Supply to vehicles at the car dealerships and everything in between, so it, it just really helps you understand, especially going into budget talks, where, how our money is spent, so. If you weren't sure, I hope maybe that helps.
I have an interest in that as well, then.
You see in your consent agenda, they'll list all the different checks that Laura reads the numbers on, and you can go through and take a look at it, but you actually see that with the Audit Committee, so. So Dee and Laura, because I know you've been looking at, have we covered the different groups?
No.
Okay. I was wondering. Okay.
Well, and I'll stay, I'll, I'll stay on the left board, that's, that's fine, but we do need a second elected official on there. And it seems like we have the same discussion for, have had the same discussion for the last three years on LTAC.
Right.
But in light of the changes and the, I won't say turmoil, but possibility of continued turmoil as we get the new ordinances set up and get all of that in place, I would agree to serve on that. to serve on that committee or to continue to serve on it, just based on what I know and what we need to do going forward.
Now, we need one more person on...
We need two, right.
Yeah, total two.
Becky said she wanted to be on LTAC.
Okay, good.
Both Audit and LTAC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We finally got on the alphabet on the thing, so we got Pat right there, so I just...
We got three that have expressed interest in the Audit so far, and there's two positions.
And I've not heard a volunteer for left board.
Left board.
Pat did volunteer for left board. We'd need a second, though.
We need a second left board.
Okay.
I still haven't, Brandon was on RTPO. That has not been brought up as well. Sueda.
So Becky's got two. Megan, how many do you have? The left board is the law enforcement firefighters' retirement program.
It's actually a supplemental, supplemental insurance plan, and the main responsibilities right now, since we've revised bylaws really fairly recently, is just approving the expenditures that have been submitted by those people that are eligible to participate in LEFT, and it's LEFT-1. So there are, what, maybe in the whole state, there's 18, maybe 20 people, but we have five? Nine?
Nine in the city of Pullman, okay.
And so, as I say, mainly it's just, right now, a matter of approving their submitted expenditures for reimbursement.
That means monthly?
Correct.
Monthly as needed, isn't it?
No.
Every month, okay.
We have bills every month.
Oh, I see. See, the one I'm on, the Board for Volunteer Firefighters and Reserve Officers, it's when we're needed, I'm there with the Chief Heston, and it's when we have the bills, it's when we, when we meet. So we met, what, four or five times this past year, so.
And all our meetings, with the exception of maybe two this summer, have been Zoom, and they typically last about three minutes.
Okay. Things will move around as we go along. Okay, now, the council has pretty well agreed on this, right? Or we still have the...
Still need RTPO and Sueda.
Three people interested in Audit.
RTPO, we don't have, oh, we haven't done RTPO. And Sueda.
And there's also two positions that we're looking for, short-term steering committee folks for the Tourism Strategic Plan and the Downtown Improvement Project.
Oh, there's some additional ones.
Yeah, it's on the, yeah. It's on the, right up on the agenda item, the two bullet points right near the bottom there.
I just kept going back to the memo and reading that.
Yeah, so these live outside because they're short-term projects, so as we're setting up the steering committee for the tourism that we got the grant for, Jen's put together a steering committee. We'd like one council member to sit on with that group, and then same with Sean's group that he's putting for the Downtown Improvements Project. We'd like one council member to sit on that steering committee. Not a long-term, not an every-year thing, this is to get this project off the, off the ground.
Okay. Megan?
I think he's going to be in one of those, but to the short term, and then longer term, the Sueda.
Okay.
I'd be willing to sit on the steering committee for the grant, the tourism piece, just tying in the whole chamber aspect of that as well.
So Megan, you volunteer for the Downtown Improvement in Sueda? Okay. So we still need RTPO. They've been doing things on Zoom for some time, but they, usually that's one that you have to travel some, that you have to go from, they, before, before COVID, they met in different counties, as you can see the different counties on there. And it was, at one time, the meetings, Francis is helping on this, weren't the meetings sort of coordinated with Sueda? Didn't they have the meetings somewhat around there? So if you went to one, you could go to the other one?
Sueda originally held the contract, and now they're separated.
Oh, that's the reason.
So the meetings did fall, and I've served on both of those previously.
Yeah, I thought you had.
And so letting other people have that opportunity.
So transportation, RTPO. Anybody want that one? Nathan, you had mentioned about your transportation background, too, before.
I've served on that before.
Oh, you have served on that one, okay. Totally understand. You've put some miles on your vehicle. Okay, well, why don't we just let that one go, and we can probably come up with, if somebody is interested, they can let us know on that, and we'll try and come up with somebody to staff it. Are we okay, then? Aside from RTPO?
Audit and CIP.
Audit, he had Audit, CIP. Mentioned LTAC, but Audit and CIP.
Well, Audit and CIP, I'm fine. I don't need to be on LTAC. There's others that want to do LTAC.
Okay.
Hundreds of committees are on in the city.
What?
Hundreds of committees are on in the city as well.
Okay.
Did someone fill the tourism, short-term one?
Yes, Pat did.
Pat did.
You're doing that one, great, okay.
Did we get enough for LTAC?
Yes, Pat and Becky.
Okay. I'm double-checking with Dee. We've, I wrote notes, but I think I got it. Yeah, RTPO is the only one we're missing. Okay. With that, any new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none at this time. City Council will adjourn to an executive session pursuant to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such considerations would cause a likelihood of an increased price. To discuss with legal counsel representing the city matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency's potential litigation concerning litigation the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in the official capacity. And, yes, there are a number of different things we're going to be discussing under executive session. Here is the last one. And while the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act do not apply to discussions relating to the interpretation or application of labor agreements or that portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or positions to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievance or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made during the course of negotiations or proceedings, City Council is announcing its attention to discuss such matters in executive session. Executive session will last approximately 15 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend, we will come out and make the announcement. I have 8:18 at this moment. We will start the executive session at 8:20 and go for 15 minutes. And council does not anticipate taking any action following the executive session.
City Council will be extending their executive session for ten minutes, that's ten minutes, to end at 8:45 PM.
executive session to end at 8:55 PM.
Pullman City Council is extending their executive session for ten more minutes, that's ten more minutes, executive session to end at 8:55 PM.
Pullman City Council is extending their executive session for 10 more minutes. That's 10 more minutes, executive session to end at 8:55 PM. Pullman City Council announces an extension of the executive session for five minutes. That's five minutes to end at 9:00 PM. City Council is extending their executive session for 10 more minutes. That's 10 more minutes to end at 9:10 PM.
Did you already tell Rob?
Yeah, I told him you already can't.
Rob, you're at 10:00.
9:10, he'll be right.
And this one here will be live.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna need two council members to stand.